I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Ledger Town Council to order. At this time, I'm going to ask the Boy Scouts in the group to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roxanne, would you call the call?
Mr. Allen?
Here.
Mrs. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. DeBrosse?
Here.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Here.
Mr. Marshall?
Here.
Mrs. McGrath?
Here.
Mr. Tom?
Here.
Mrs. DeGat?
Here.
Nadya here, Mr. Loxton?
At this time, I would ask if there were any resident and property owners that would wish to speak before the council. Mr. Cherry?
This is really short. I think I've already sent you an email on it. Mike Cherry, by Brooklyn Road Drive, the Oyster area, Chairman Pyan Zomig. There was a lengthy piece in the day on Saturday, March 9th, talking about seeking new ways to help towns and cities. The first paragraph said, "Given fiscal pressures that have confronted the statements of municipalities the last several years, the resistance to fundamental change has been remarkable, perhaps a testament to how deeply ingrained in Connecticut are the concepts of honorable and individual autonomy for each city and town." And it goes on to explain regionalization is the answer and how there could be legislative support for it. I'll be... the copy with Roxanne, I think I've sent it, but once again, that was a pretty good editorial in the day on Saturday, March 9th.
Thank you for sharing that. Mr. Lamb, did you have your hand up? You're next up.
Thank you. So, Mr. Lamb, I'm in town. I believe I talked to a few of you in regards to ordinance 45. Couple of main questions that came up this week on the site question. Is any town employee eligible or legally can change an ordinance before it goes to the appropriate committees and commissions and approved by the council?
I don't know the answer to that. I would assume not.
Okay. Because while on our visit, there was a decision made that should be checked immediately and a follow-up to find out if that should be corrected because it's considered in the erosion control, the driveway maintenance, our unsatisfactory material was put in. It wasn't approved and two people from the town said, "I can make those changes." I think it's better. I think it has to go through a committee, approved by the planning commission, like it says in ordinance 45, and council approval. That's one. When we're reviewing some other issues, I brought on Bittersweet. I sent a letter or hand-delivered a letter to the mayor's office to bring with him at the 2:00 meeting, three items. A plan which is here in the planning commission or Steve Madelun's office. A Maslin Public Works inspection sheet for driveway, abrins, and road conditions. And the third thing was any other changes that might have been approved by the public works director. Both of them come empty-handed. Didn't have time. Five hours. Couldn't go and pick up three pieces of material. I don't think it's appropriate. So, if we would look into this, I appreciate it to get an answer. If it's got to go back to review by the planning commission or whatever, if they want me there to discuss what we found, I'd more appreciate to do that. The other... one of the things that's important was I believe one of these is filled out for any driveway. Driveway permits and whatever is done by the public works director, no paper trail. The building official has done an excellent outstanding job doing inspections on homes that were built on 59. There's about 10 or 12 sheets that were completed. Look at a CO issued by public works director so they could get a CO for that property of 59. And on a Hoshi okay, but there was two words, "all set." Don't understand what that means. That's, to me, inappropriate inspection sheet, especially when you have these filled out. Should accompany you that letter. It runs the building official and the other people involved. The members? This is your letter?
Thank you.
They always talk about, "I didn't see things the right way." Mr. Madelun said, "My eyesight's bad." So, pass this around. These are the conditions to get it on Bittersweet. My parents packed it. Do you have a hearing tomorrow night? Take it tonight. I'll pick them up from the club tomorrow if I could.
Sounds good. Thank you. I'm going to keep these back here for...
We also talked about Cedar Ridge. They tore the road up when they wasn't able to asphalt to prevent muddy conditions. The two residents who are living on that are passing through mud. Catch basins are filled up with silt. No silt fence, no hay bales, no woodchicks. I asked Steve Madelun how he was going to plow it last week. He says, "Not a problem." One of the neighbors called. He says, "Come down and take a picture." As you can see, the road couldn't be plowed and these are the other conditions there on that development. Just we've got a copy of this inspection sheet from Mrs. Maslin to the CO issue. Two words, "all set." There's no other sheet that I can find for driveway permits and other inspections on the whole site. I'd like to get a copy of those if they're available. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. I would like to refer this to... back to Land use. I believe we had some discussion on it.
Uh, we had some discussion. We also had a look at the new ordinance.
That was...
For updating and also for...
Okay. And also, as far as ordinance 45, at some point, admin will be taking a look at that so you probably... Because after it leaves Land use, it'll end up with admin, so you probably ought to just take a look. And I know planning is... has some discussion on it as well. Thank you. Any other residents and property owners wish to speak before the council? At this time, I would ask Dr. Brineer. He's going to give us an update on the middle school addition project.
Well, thank you very much. And Mr. Mar, I think it's been a little bit of a presentation. Great. Well, I was here two weeks ago?
Two weeks, two weeks ago.
And I gave a little bit of an orientation, but without a cost estimate. And so, this evening, I'm going to kind of give you an update of where we are with our plans and then add in a cost estimate. So, we are, of course, talking about Ledger Middle School and... next slide, please. The more I thought about it, I thought it was a little easier to organize. There are really five problems, if you think about it that way, five problems that we're going to address. And I do want to point out, I spent a fair amount of time this afternoon figuring out how I could use a pointer without breaking the screen. And after lots of discussions with Mr. Mar, I realized I could use my finger. So, that's a real technological advantage.
Just be careful.
Yes, I'll try. I had visions of like a sharp pointer and everybody would be cringy as I did that. Anyway, so, we've got five concerns that we'd like to address. One is obviously the security concerns in the building. The second is that we have Ledger Center School, which is this aging facility that we need to address. We want to organize the middle school, which is really kind of a curricular thing. Fourth, we want to improve the instructional spaces. And five, we would like to include a kitchen in that facility for two reasons. One, that it could serve as a emergency shelter and two, it would provide a better nutritional program for our children, at least a warmer program. So, maybe the next slide. So, building security is really the huge thing that we're concerned with. When someone enters Ledger Middle School, as many of the people in this audience know, the vast majority of this building is open design. It was designed at a time when open education was popular, open classroom education. And all five of the major, what we call cluster areas, are wide open. There are no dividing walls. And as a result of that, the most normal, the most common technique that we use in schools today of a lockdown is children in a classroom and the door is locked and the children are put out of sight of anyone, of an intruder coming into the building. And of course, that is impossible in this building. And when we... actually, in the fall, even before Sandy Hook took place, we had parents in our building just talking about the renovation. And I was concerned about the instructional spaces, to be perfectly truthful, because my three children went here. And frankly, security wasn't foremost in my mind at that moment. But the... what I'll talk about in a minute, somewhat noisy environment was. But when people saw that, they were extremely concerned about that. And then, of course, we had a presentation after the Sandy Hook incident and people were very concerned, to say the least. So, next slide. This is what the architect is suggesting. And of course, in terms of security, two things. One is we would... this is the new wing. And the green spaces are the current cluster area. And we would take the... basically, take the media center, take the roof off the building and plant a courtyard. And then around that courtyard would be six classrooms on one side, six classrooms on the other. So, 12 classrooms, self-contained, regular, traditional, four-wall classrooms with a locked door would surround the courtyard. And then, six classrooms on each side of the building would, of course, provide lockable instructional spaces for a lockdown. And then, when I talk about the sixth grade, I'll explain that we're also proposing to build a wing which would accommodate the sixth grade children. And as you can see, there are... these are science labs here and the media center would be here. And the other security thing that the architect designed is that instead of coming in right now, people enter this doorway here, we'd actually use this doorway and we would build, in addition to the front door, there would be a sort of a vestibule, like a little lobby. So, somebody would be buzzed in, go into the lobby, speak to the office. The office staff were going to move to this side. And once that person got authorization to go further into the building, then they would be buzzed in a second time. So, this would be a really a great security update. So, the second problem is that my numbers didn't line up. But the real second problem, so much for technology. You have to look a little crooked here. But the Ledger... Ledger Center School was built 63 years ago and it certainly was not built with modern technology in mind. So, a couple of things jump out. First of all, the roof of the building is nearing the end of its useful life. School roofs are good usually for 20 to 25 years, sometimes a little bit more than that. But it is a huge price tag. It's a million dollars. But to be honest, the state would pay for two-thirds of that. Actually, they just dropped the reimbursement rate. So, the state would pay for 60% of that and the town would have to pay for 40%. But $400,000 is a lot of money. The second thing is the blacktop where the children play in the back of the school has lots of... I hesitate to call them sinkholes in this...
That's...
Yeah, yeah. Pumps.
Pumps.
And it's not exactly a smooth surface. And we have had this on our capital improvement list for a long time. It would require, Mr. Kilpatrick is your director of maintenance, it would actually require essentially picking up, taking up the whole surface and figuring out, God only knows what's underneath there and then cleaning that out and then putting down a new surface. But the next two are really the most problematic and cost the most amount of money currently. The plumbing system, 63 years ago, all, you know, pretty much all original equipment. We... I don't want to exaggerate, but certainly on a monthly basis, we've got some sort of a failure of... And, you know, we get down in the balance of the school and change out pipes and so forth. But it is becoming more and more of a problem. But probably the most problematic is the electrical system because we now have, of course, computers and smart boards and all the sorts of modern equipment. And just last month, we put a $25,000 upgrade, basically a whole wing of the building that kind of lost power. It keeps tripping the breaker, which, as you can imagine, you know, we've got all sorts of stuff in there. So, there's, you know, a substantial amount of money that the town is facing with this aging facility. And if we renovate the middle school, as I'm hoping, we would move the sixth graders into the middle school and the children at Ledger Center, one-third of the children at Ledger Center would go to Gale Hill and two-thirds would go to Juliette Long and Gale Sperry and we'd check the classrooms and so forth. There's sufficient space at the current level, you know, and we're also holding our breath about if the demographics of this town shifted. But at the current level, we certainly have enough space. Next slide, please. And if we did that, we would save a fairly significant amount of money every year permanently. Certainly, the staff, and this, I think, is pretty conservative. We would not need a principal. We would not need a secretary. There's actually three custodians. We'd probably save one custodian to the middle school, the new middle school, but two custodians. There would be some economies with teachers, both special area teachers and classroom teachers. So, I'm saying FTEs because it could be portions. And then there would be... there would be people not using health insurance. There would be people not... we would have to pay taxes for. So, that's about $475,000. We had a heating cost done here and Mr. Knoprosky astutely observed, we still have to heat the building, so we took that off. But there is no sewer over in Gale Sperry, so that savings would be clear. And then, when I said to Mr. Kilpatrick, "What does it cost us just to maintain Ledger?" You know, if we could walk away from Ledger Center, clearly $500 a week. That'd be a good week. So, we are confident that we will save on an ongoing basis a little bit more than $500,000. So, next slide, please. So, the third problem is we very much want to reorganize the middle school. Right now, our middle school is a seven and eight organization. The certification regulations, curriculum, everything is organized K-5, 6, 8, 9, 12. We think for instructional purposes, certainly with the new curriculum, with the Common Core curriculum, that sixth grade mathematics and sixth grade science have become much, much more rigorous. And we would really... we think it's best that those subjects be taught by certified, essentially middle school certified teachers, not elementary generalist teachers. We also have national assessments coming. The students this week are taking the CAP test and CMT. The CAP and the CMT test are... will go away in the spring of 2015. Big shock to people in Connecticut. And they will be replaced with national tests so that we will know how well the children are doing compared to the students in California and Nevada and New Hampshire and so forth. So, we know... actually, Kentucky has actually started to give these tests already and the scores are significantly lower. So, when we sort of report that students at mastery at the elementary level, about 75% of our children are at mastery and at the high school level, about 60%. Those numbers are... I'll tell you right now, they're not going to be numbers like that. It is a much, much more rigorous curriculum. And I guess if you think about it, if we say it's a more rigorous curriculum and the students do exactly as well as they did before, then one would have to question how much more rigorous it is. But nevertheless, we are going to have way more rigorous curriculum and we think it's really important to organize our sixth graders there. And then, just a couple of, not the biggest things in the world, but I think something worth mentioning. 93% of the sixth graders in this country go to middle schools. Actually, seven-eighths is really quite rare. Part of the problem not going to middle school is, unlike my grandson, who is a sixth grader in Groton, who, starting on the soccer team, I might brag, actually is going to play three years of interscholastic sports. Our students don't get to play interscholastic sports until they're seventh graders. So, my grandson already has a year of soccer, interscholastic soccer under his belt.
We're not worried.
Yeah, yeah. And then, there are other aspects of middle school that we think would be a good idea. For example, the students would participate in drama and music and the newspaper. And one sort of soft element I'll put in here, I say as a parent, is you send your children to the seventh grade and they sort of get ready to become middle school students. And then they're eighth graders and you're getting ready to send them out to high school. And they're just... it's just not enough time. The PTO misses this frequently. You're in, you're out. We think it'd be a great idea to have students come as sixth graders. If you come to our elementary schools and you look at the modern sixth graders, I often mistake them for high school interns. The sixth graders can be quite mature. And we think that having them in the middle school setting is more appropriate. So, here is the, as my mother would say, the pièce de la distance. The real problem in my mind, and we're going to have a video of this and some of the students perhaps can give me an amen on this. But when your math teacher, if you're sitting in the back, God forbid, of the room, and your math teacher is here and you have a relatively loud social studies teacher six or seven feet away and that teacher is doing an animated lecture or something... We have some middle schools who've actually experienced this. Students in math class frequently tell me that they really understood that history lesson because the guy in the back, you know, it's... Mr. Allen invited his wife to come on this tour. When we... she spoke to me and said, "Frankly, I thought that Fred was kidding that there weren't any interior walls." There are really no interior... well, not no, but there are few interior walls. So, you have four instructional spaces here. So, math, social studies, language arts, and health or something. And these... all this instruction is going on and you can imagine taking a test. I actually have some colorful stories that I won't share with you about certain subjects we're being talked about in health while other students were studying French or something. But the point is, it is quite disruptive. And what I have learned since we have talked about this a bit is a number of parents have come to me and said, "I didn't want my children to go to that middle school for that reason because my child tends to be relatively distractible on a good day. Put him in a building where there are a few interior walls. It's really quite problematic." So, here's, of course, back to my plan for what we're hoping. There would be 24 classroom spaces. We would convert the open clusters into a central hallway down each area. But there would be 24 classrooms and then there would be six science rooms, science labs, with a media center and a couple of... three classrooms here, tech ed and art. And one thing that I forgot to mention is that this green area here would be five classrooms for our preschool classes because when we send one-third of the children from Ledger Center School to Gale Hill, we won't have room for the preschool there. That problem actually created a great solution because when we added 100 children to the building, the total population increased by 100. So, we went from 550 students to 650 students. And so, we maximize our reimbursement. In other words, the state only reimburses you a certain number of square feet per child. And you could build bigger schools than that if you want to. You just don't get... You don't get the 62% reimbursement that we were hoping to get. So, anyway, we would be able to, in addition to the security issues, we would be able to have classrooms with floor-to-ceiling, even though it's pretty high ceiling in there, floor-to-ceiling spaces that would create regular, traditional classrooms. And then, the last issue, problem that we'd like to address. One is, I'm somewhat sensitive to, and I know Mr. Davis is. When we manned the Emergency Operations Center, now two times in the last two years, we have not had particularly good luck, especially on the Gale Sperry side of town, in having an emergency shelter, someplace that would have hot showers and hot meals and so forth. And so, what this renovation would do... I'm sorry, could you go back one? Is that... thanks. One of the things that we're planning, again, it's a little bit of a shock in Ledger, Connecticut, is a kitchen. We have... since 1832, there's never been a kitchen in Ledger until 10 years ago when the high school had one. We never cooked lunch. Now, we cook lunch and we put it in a truck and we take it over to all the other schools. So, this kitchen would, of course, provide us the opportunity, A, to have food for the middle school. B, if we have a larger area here, you'd know that Gale Sperry is here and Juliette Long is here. So, we would be able to prepare the food and serve it warm to those areas. But perhaps more importantly, because there would be an emergency generator that would be built in part of the plant, we would have a kitchen and the kitchen would be able to serve as emergency shelter. And then the locker rooms, of course, would have hot showers. We actually used that during the day this year. But when I mentioned this to the Richard Operations Director, he was actually thinking about real emergency operations where we could use the field nearby to land helicopter with emergency supplies and so forth to have a good traffic flow from Route 12 to the school and off to 214. So, this facility has a shelter, and then complete it. This facility has a shelter and actually has a lot of attraction. And then, as I said, we would like, if we could, to build a food service facility there. Next slide, please. So, here is the proverbial bottom line. The architect has estimated... when you... The reason the state is willing to pay $28 million is because it will become a new school, new in every sense of the word. New heat, new ventilation, all ADA bathrooms. When this building, when that building was built, this one too, there are no sprinklers. It's sort of grandfathered in, but we would build sprinklers into the new facility. So, it will be a new, literally a new facility in pretty much every sense of the word. So, generally speaking, the overall price will give you a little more detail in a minute is $45 million. $28 million of that would be paid for by the state if it passes the referendum. The town share would be about $17 million. And when we asked the bond consultant what that would cost, I'll give you the average number first and I can go into some details if you like. But the average number is about $1.2 million over a 22-year period. So, what I did, because it sort of goes... it goes up slightly for a few years and then it goes up again. Then it starts to come down. Me, Ronald Alito, and I are working on a little graphic that I think will explain this when we talk seriously about the... when we talk seriously about the money. But basically, I asked the tax assessor, what is the average home in Ledger and the average home in Ledger, the average homeowner, if this brought, if this brought the kind of value that I hope would occur here, it would cost about a hundred dollars for the average homeowner, per year. Next slide, please. Part of the reason for that is, I guess, it's a little, as surprising or shocking as some people say, is the price is for forty-five million. How could a forty-five million dollar school only cost us a hundred bucks a year? Well, the answer is because this is the actual price for the forty-four-seven and the actual state shares a little bit more than that and our shares a little bit less than seventeen million. And I will say this, if we get the referendum passed on the twenty-first of May and we get some legislation that I am writing, proposed, and I think we'll get support, the price tag would be one-point-five million dollars less. Every year, there's sort of inflationary factor built in, so the sooner we do this, the better. The other thing is that the state has proposed that the reimbursement rate would drop from sixty-two percent to sixty percent. So if we get, and that costs us two million bucks, if we get it in before June thirtieth, we would get the current sixty-two percent. So I'm, of course, anxious to do that. So the twenty-year bond, it says one-point-two million, but remember, we're going to save more than a half a million dollars by closing Ledger Center School. So when you subtract that, you get to a project cost of really about seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars here, which is more reasonable. And as I said, Mayor and I at some future meeting will talk a little bit about the, we ran out about fifteen years of indebtedness for the town and actually it looks good. I don't want to suggest this is not a huge undertaking for the town because it is, I certainly understand that. But it would appear for the, like I say, if people think there's value in this project, it would appear it's certainly a manageable cost. And maybe, yeah, okay, that is the last one. So my financial advisor, Mr. Bieber, told me it's best to talk in around numbers and he's right. So what we're proposing is a forty-five, about a forty-five million dollar project. Now that's the architect's estimate. We are hoping, of course, A, that it would come in sooner, we'd get the project, so the price would be lower than that. And for what we're trying to do, potentially, it could, or, so the state share would be twenty-eight, town share seventeen, as I say, and about a hundred dollars per average homeowner. Some people will pay a little more than that, some people would pay less than that. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any council members have any questions?
Yes.
What's the timeframe of this best-case scenario?
The best-case scenario is, I think, three years from now to the...
Putting the key in the door.
Putting the key in the door. Because, could you, yeah, sorry. What we would do is, if you give me the plan, it's part of the third or fourth, the new plan, one more, please. We would build this first. So the very first thing that would happen is the architect would spend a better part of nine months or so getting the plans, drawing the plans, getting the plans approved, and then we would build the wing. During the summer, some of this other stuff, all the electrical, could be taken care of. Once we built the wing, we would take one cluster of students, I said, the grade cluster, and put them in that wing and then for the next nine months or so, that would be completely renovated. And then when that area was taken, we'd take students here and put those there. So it would really be, the students would never, fortunately, would never be displaced because having to have portables or to put them someplace else would be a lot. We don't have a place for, right now, there are about three-hundred, three-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred-and-sixty students there right now. We wouldn't be able to do that. And I don't think, as you may know, portable classrooms are extremely expensive. So this would give us an opportunity, best case, I think, reasonable case, I don't want to say worst case, reasonable case, probably five years, best case, three years. Maybe a little bit shorter, depending upon construction.
Okay, and then one more, and maybe a little premature, but have you worked out the busing details?
Yeah, the busing details work out quite well. No additional buses. The sixth grade, the sixth grade children would ride on the secondary buses, that's not an issue. And the children who are at Ledger Center, when we order a bus, it costs about forty-five-thousand dollars a year per bus and we get the bus essentially for the whole day. So if the bus goes to some child's home in Algen Heights, say, and takes the child to Ledger Center, that same bus would go to probably, would go to Julia Long, Gale Sperry. So we don't see an impact, not an increased impact from buses.
Any other questions of town councillors? So that the public doesn't think that we're disinterested in not asking a lot of questions, I just would mention that we have heard pieces of this many times, so this is not the first time we've heard it. I just didn't want people to think, because we're not asking any questions, that we haven't heard much of this before.
Actually, the public should know tomorrow night, Mr. Perry is here, I'll be joined to Mr. Perry's committee. Monday night, I'm going to the permanent building committee. Wednesday night, I'll be back to Mr. Francis's finance committee and then on the twenty-seventh, I'll be here. So there's been a lot of cooperation, Mayor Ronald Alico, Council President Davis. We spent a lot of time on this.
On the timeline.
And we think, we think we can pull this off by the twenty-first of May and, you know, put it to the voters.
Very good. Thank you for coming again tonight.
You're welcome.
Are there any comments of town councillors this evening? Councilor McGraw.
Okay. For the general public, on Saturday, March the twenty-third, there's going to be a CPR and first aid class given at St. David's Church and it will be from one until seven. Also, the elderly housing complex that we have in Gale Sperry, under the auspices of HUD, the Housing and Urban Development, they establish the maximum income limits for this year. And in other words, you cannot earn more than forty-five thousand, one hundred dollars to be eligible to live in elderly housing and then your rent is based on your income. That's the max. Just a next one.
Thank you. Any other comments, Councilor Saum?
I just wanted to take a really quick minute to thank Naomi Rodriguez and all the people who turned out to organize the dinner for the Munger family on Friday night at St. David's and thank you to St. David's as well for hosting it and also to Valentino's and all the people who showed up at Valentino's on Monday night for the Perry family. It was really great to see Ledger turn out for all of those.
Any other comments of town councillors? Moving on to minute approval.
So moved.
All of them. Your motion's been made and seconded. Roxanne, would you call the rule?
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Saum?
Yes.
Mrs. Vedetti?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Abstain.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Eight in favor, one abstention.
Have the communications list. We already did the referrals. Subcommittee liaison reports admin.
Administration committee met earlier this evening. Moved forward a couple of items that we'll see later on in the agenda and that's it.
Community Services Committee, Councilor Marshall.
We have not met since the last meeting.
Finance Committee, Councilor France. Oh, you're going to be so busy this week.
Thank you for reminding us.
In addition to things here on the agenda, the pledge presentation schedule shifted. It was out of town last week, we shifted this schedule a week, so it will start up this Thursday, following Tuesday, and then the Tuesday after that on the twenty-sixth, we have three busing trips. Pledge of presentation for the town government.
Any questions for Finance? Information Technology, Councilor Saum.
We have not met since the last council.
Land use planning, Public Works, Councilor Dombrowski.
We have met, as we moved earlier, we did have a discussion with President Mr. Lamb regarding ordinance forty-five, which we are continuing to discuss. Also, we had met with Mr. Jeff Smith, posting the signs for the law, the legal requirement for life access to bicycles when they're on the side of the road. So we were discussing with the ordinance signs drafted up, informational signs created that we could post various locations in town. The other thing we had discussed was the administrative control of the home property. The mayor had recommended that the one commission and we referred that back to the mayor recommending project commission. We'll wait for the mayor to respond to that.
Difference of opinion. Could you tell any gist of the whole conversation?
The mayor recommended the parks are red, so we had recommended that the conservation commission.
Okay.
And you say that you're waiting for the mayor to respond?
Yeah.
Done. Very well.
Well, now that we said it right there.
No, no, we're done in two days. Yeah, I understand that, so.
Okay, then. Yeah, yes, any questions?
Nope, I have to back up, correct my...
Go ahead.
But did you want to be questions first?
Oh, did anybody have any questions? No, okay, go ahead, correct your...
Since the IT committee met just before Lamb was met, I lost the week. It did me. I just didn't do the report. But we had a great meeting with all of the volunteer emergency services, including the police department regarding a common platform for emergency services software. We met in this room and everybody came, both fire departments, ambulance and police and dispatch.
And dispatch.
So really great starting session and I'll leave it at that. Go on, work to it.
Board of Education liaison, Councilor Allen.
Yes, the Board of Education met last Wednesday. First, I'd like to congratulate Colin Grimm for his, he won the state open championship for wrestling, so congratulations to him. Also, congrats to the boys and girls basketball teams for their ECC championships. There was a presentation on veterinary assistant certification program. I didn't even know they had that at the schools through agri-science, but it's a three-year course and eight students completed that and received their pre-vet certification certificate, which is fantastic. The agri-science team placed second in the Cohog Bowl, so they're going to be competing in a New England tournament. The school security committee, there is a school security committee for which I am on this now, and they have already begun implementing the securitization, I'll say, of the clusters. So what's involved is closing in the entry doorways to the clusters, it's about a ten-foot wide opening, putting a set of doors in there. So Mr. Kilpatrick has been working hard on that and that's moving along quickly. So that'll be done by the end of April vacation, but they're all in place now and functioning. Let's see, I'm going to kind of gloss over the middle school presentation because we just got it again. And lastly, they voted to forward the middle school project as presented, so it's going to be...
Unanimously voted.
They unanimously voted to approve it, so it's on to us at this point.
On our agenda this evening.
Correct.
Any questions for Councilor Allen? WPCA, Councilor Saum.
WPCA did meet last night, special meeting, and we talked about the, we started work on the budget for this year for the water.
Just started work?
No, we've started working, but it's wild. You know we don't do it one day.
No, I know, it's just the way you said it and I'm thinking, Dr. Arsh, you're coming to us pretty soon to find us. No, it's okay.
Any questions for Councilor Saum? Any other liaison reports? Report of the mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. A few things. First of all, since we're talking about facilities, the police facility also is moving ahead. We did receive an estimate from our architect for the three sites that are still under consideration, that being the town hall site, the J Alfred Clark site, the on the way to the transfer station, and then an alternative site at the Gale Sperry, the former Gale Sperry school. So we will be looking at those now that we have those estimates. We sent some questions back to the architect, again, with the objective of getting back to the council by the twenty-seventh of this month such that we can meet the requirements to be on a referendum on the twenty-first. But that is with the building committees, that's really in their hands, it's been with them for eight months. We've spoken for several months now about the Pro Act prescription discount cards. They are or shortly will be in the mail, so you will be seeing those. I'm going to guess sometime next week, they will look like this. There's a little, you'll see the town emblem on that, you'll see a little message from me there, but this is the card and this is real. It is an endorsed plan, there's no charge to the town, no charge to the taxpayer or to the user. And what I've been recommending to people is that they keep this card with them. If you have more than one, you know, person in the family, give each of them one, there's plenty of cards that we have. And when you go to the pharmacist, you know, very often you may have even a very good healthcare plan or prescription plan, but we all know there are things that are just not covered sometimes and that's the time that you pull this card out and say, well, okay, I have this one. You're not going to get necessarily insurance rates, but you certainly may get a discount. So again, it's something, if you have insurance, if you have limited insurance or no insurance, this is something that you should be looking for. So again, these will be arriving in your mailbox shortly. The HUD rehab grant that we've talked about, and this is a grant for income, it's similar to what Councilor McGraw talked about in terms of the income limits. We're trying to apply for another round of grants. We have three-hundred-thousand dollars, we've used about half of that money. It's a great grant, you know, as I was listening to some of the comments tonight, we talked about blight and houses that need repairs. Here's a case where we have money and we can do repairs on homes. We've already done several homes, there's some that are being bid right now. There, of course, are income limits, but there's the only encumbrance to the homeowner is that we lean the property. So say you have a twenty-five-thousand-dollar project for a new furnace and a new roof, a twenty-five-thousand-dollar lien would be put against your property and the only time that would be due is when you transferred the property, when it was transferred. There's no interest that would accrue, so it's an excellent program if you know of people that might be interested. We have applications in the town hall, we'd love to have you fill one out, there's no obligation, but we're trying to gather those so that we can submit for a second round of the grant to keep this program going. A few comments, Mr. Lamb was here today and showed you some pictures. Coincidentally, I tend to go up to Bittersweet the day after heavy rains. I took several pictures myself of that property. We did meet up there and I'm very satisfied with what's been done as far as the apron that's been put at the end of there. If you go up there, we had a very heavy rain yesterday and there's almost no, nothing tracked, keeping in mind that any construction site, you know, soil is tracked onto the roads, but you'd be very surprised at how little there is there. I'm very satisfied with what was there, we did meet there, that was accurate. I was requested to give information to him and bring it there. However, it was quite a bit of information, probably more than he may have anticipated. I treated that as an FOI. However, I was able to put the information together, it's sitting in my office with a letter waiting for him, he'll be notified in the morning. So I just wanted to clear that up. As far as blight, I just want to raise some comments. I know they raised, clarified a couple of things, I know there was a comment attributed to me and I probably did say it, that enforcement was not a priority now. You know, local governments tend to have more flexibility and common sense than governments at a higher level. And, you know, we need to, we need to be very, very careful. We can never predict the action of future officials and we need to avoid, you know, emotion and hysteria in this. We're not coming after tire swings, we're not coming after treehouses if this is enacted. I can take anyone around town and show you blatant, blatant zoning violations. And I said... said this at the last meeting, that have existed for twenty to thirty years. So, the issue, and that covered, you know, many, many administrations, many zoning officials. You know, yes, we have regulations right now, and, you know, Mr. Lamb pointed some out, you know, it is very difficult to fully enforce, to the letter of the law, every regulation we have in this town. I said that regulation was not our priority for the simple reason that we're a part-time zoning official and a part-time wetlands official, and I will say it here, if anyone knows of someone who was a qualified zoning and wetlands official, you bring me their resume, and I'll call them the same day. We have tried repeatedly to get someone, we are very fortunate with who we have right now, but he has a limited amount of time, and he's, he has to set priorities on what he does, and everything he does, when you think about it, is enforcement. Anytime the person applies for any type of permit, or it does any work, there's always enforcement that is, that is involved. I'd like to get finally to dispatch. Again, there have been comments and things in the media about that. I want to say again that what we're doing right now is we are meeting with our own Leger dispatch, and we're having serious discussions about our dispatch center, and it's similar discussions to what we had with Monville and what we had with Groton. This process has been an open process. It initiated in the Public Safety Commission, which operates in the open. There are representatives of every emergency service on that board. This is, there's nothing that's been done in secret, and I would prefer to not debate this in the media, and hope this doesn't turn into fear mongering that typically comes with any change that we might propose. But that being said, I do take exception to recent comments because I think they're misleading to the public. You know, as Daniel Patrick Moynihan, a great statesman, said, "Everybody's entitled to his own opinion, but not to their own facts." And so, we need to be careful. When we make statements like, "Calls to a town other than where an emergency is located could result in a delayed dispatch, you're talking a minute or two, but two or three minutes could be somebody's life," that implies that the public's life is at risk. And that implies that the residents of Preston and the residents of North Stonington are at risk because we dispatch Preston, and Groton dispatches North Stonington. So, I think if we're going to throw around innuendo, we need to make sure we have our facts, and we need to make sure that we have our house, our own house, in order. Let me conclude with this. Every meeting we've had to discuss dispatch and to discuss this with any organization or group has been initiated by my office. I have not had people come in to me and saying they want to discuss this, they want to give me information. I'm open, and I said it before, I'm open to anyone who wants to discuss this. If you're willing to discuss the process and discuss what we need to do to give Leger the best dispatch and emergency communication system that we can have. I'm open to input, no decision has been made, and I would certainly love to hear from anyone. With that, I will close my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from Congress?
I guess you came down after so much now. That's the most I've ever heard you talk so eloquently about something that you were upset about. But I do, I want to go after that comment about people's lives in danger, because state police dispatched our police, and I had a burglar alarm go off at my house one night, and I thought there was someone breaking into my house, and the alarm company called, and I said, "Please send the police." The state police did not dispatch our Leger police for 21 minutes. I actually filed a complaint, that's why I found out how long it took. If there was somebody in my house, I might not be here now. So, there is something to the fact that dispatching needs to happen quickly, and the state police's argument was they had more important things that they were dispatching. Now, maybe they did, but to me, this was important to me. So, just, you know, there is something to, you know, not getting dispatched fast all the time.
Mayor McGrath. Wait a minute now, she's former Mayor McGrath. No, no, former Mayor McGrath, wouldn't former apply that you were past? Mayor McGrath.
I'm Mary.
Hey, Mary, what do you have to say? Okay. Mr. Lamb kept referring to "we," "we." Is he on some kind of a town authorized committee, town sanctioned committee, or is he operating as a private citizen?
He's operating as a private citizen. You know, several of us have met, have met since yesterday. We met with him, another person, town engineer myself, so I don't know, I didn't catch what the context of that was. He's operating as a private citizen. He's bringing some very valid things to our attention. You know, ordinance forty-five is 25 years old, and, you know, the point he brings up is very good, you know, when, when we do these subdivision plans, you know, you hire someone, an architect that he puts down, and I'm sure he just, you know, goes to some type of a menu or some type of a library and pulls down pictures. Well, you know, it requires certain things for aprons at the end of the driveway. You know, we could, we could force contractors in town to do that. We could force contractors to come into our town engineer with showing him the grass seed mixture that they use and the fertilizer that they use, which is required by ordinance forty-five, and I have to tell you, we don't have those records.
We also don't have, we also don't have the manpower to have all the review.
Right, but we can go there and we can look at something that's being built, and we can make sure that it meets the requirements and that things go properly. There are some very, very good points that he brings up as far as storm drains. You know what happens to storm drains during construction, and there probably needs to be something in there, and I spoke with a contractor about it, I said, you know, we probably need words in there that require the contractor on a regular basis to clean the storm drains. That would probably make more sense than checking the kind of grass seed he's using. So, yes, there are some things I think that we can do. No, Mr. Lamb is acting as a private citizen in this particular question.
Any other questions for the mayor?
I'd just like to just, just to clear up something, so again, we don't have people afraid here. We have, we have a very, we have a little bit of a different system, although other resident state trooper towns also do the same thing we do. When a call comes in on 911, it comes into our dispatch center, and our dispatch center by contract or whatever policy does have to notify the state police. However, with the technology we have, we immediately dispatch our police.
We do now, we do now.
We do now, yes, okay, yes. That is something we've done, other towns have adopted the same program. It makes sense, the state police don't have any problems with it, as opposed to, you know, some towns, there are neighboring towns that are, that have a very similar system to ours, and their calls do go directly to barracks. We do not do that. But again, response times, I've always said, response time is the number one judge of your emergency services, both in terms of dispatch and the way the services respond.
And when the police were notified and finally got the correct address, because the first time I went through was the wrong address, they were at my house in less than three minutes.
We, if our police are on duty, as they are in the east and west end, they're within minutes of any home, there are other emergency services, I think, I think response time for all of our emergency services should be our number one priority.
And I will make the final comment in regards to that, in terms of minutes and response time, and this is an argument I'm going to bring up every time we discuss minutes and response time, is why don't we have an ambulance in Galesbury if minutes and response time are so important to everybody, which they should be? But I bet you there's a lot of citizens in the town of Leger, in the, in the capital of Leger down in Galesbury, as I always like to call it, who have no idea that there's not an ambulance in Galesbury. And I think, I think that you can't talk about minutes and response time without addressing that issue, so.
It's not capital yet.
It's not the capital yet, okay.
If you haven't heard, the capital has moved from Galesbury to Leger.
It has. All right, old business, I understand you are going to not discuss the peddlers, hawkers, street vendors.
We did spend time on that in the admin committee, however, we found a couple of significant changes that need to occur, so we'll go back to review the mayor's assistant, and we'll see if we can.
And when I, when an ordinance has that long of a name, it always worries me, especially when I saw the ordinance that is how many pages? For one, it was one.
The name didn't change, it's the same length name, he had pages.
Couldn't we make the name?
We were going to say people who sell things, but.
I like that, actually. Okay, we're now moving on to new business, admin? Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Sauc. Anybody like to amend the agenda under new business? See, I knew that. Admin, item number one.
So, we're not going to do anything, I'm sorry.
I was getting.
I have a long agenda. So, item number one, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a proposed blight ordinance for the town of Leger as contained in the draft dated February 13th, 2013.
At this time, I would just want to add that besides the input we received tonight, you have all seen the correspondence, additional documents, and emails from Mr. Treaster, as well as information from the town attorney. So, I will open it up for discussion at this time. I know lots of people were taking notes, and whoever would like to raise their hand first? Mr. Sauc.
I had four things that I wrote down that were concerning to me. First of all, I support, and I'm going to vote for this unless someone changes my mind, but I've been working on this since 2009. The first is the issue of this ordinance being a taking of land, that was in some of the correspondence, or taking of property. I just want to balance that charge, if you will, with the fact that a person who has blighted property also, in my opinion, does some taking of property by detracting from the property value of the people around them. So, I don't think we can consider one without the other. Second point is that this is not just about painting houses different colors and taking property and making people remove swings, it's more about public safety, and very bad things happen at blighted properties. I have personal experience with that, with people actually getting physically hurt, multiple police visits, so that's my second one. I also want to thank the admin committee for considering my comments. I understand that state statutes don't enable us mentioning police visits, but the fact is, in my experience and as we've seen in some of the correspondence, that when there is blight, there's also a higher level of dangerous activity and a threat to public safety. Third point, I want to, I checked with Mr. Cherry during the break, he made some points that I thought were very important for me, that I was concerned by Mr. Treaster's mention of the rhythm of mandamus. Number one, my interpretation is that zoning is a matter of discretion. You can't force a zoning officer to enforce the zoning regulations, the zoning officer has some discretion in that, and I see the enforcement of a blight ordinance as very, very similar. I also asked the question, and to my knowledge, Leger has never had a case where the zoning officer was forced through court action to enforce Leger's zoning regulations. I see no reason to think that if a neighbor complained about their neighbor in a bitter dispute and tried to, you know, use the blight ordinance, I see no reason to think that Leger's blight ordinance enforcement officer would have to take action. So, I think common sense has historically prevailed in zoning enforcement, I expect that it will in blight as well. Last point, I was really taken with both Mr. and Mrs. Warranga's comments. I thought that was a great presentation by both of them about, come on, my dear, can't we do a better job? Can we support each other? And I want to draw two points, the mayor already made one, we have a $400,000 grant application we're going to vote on tonight specifically for helping people who need financial assistance with improving their property. And second, I see no reason that we can't have a blight ordinance and do community service and support for people who need help. Those are my thoughts, and what I think are relevant points raised tonight. Thank you.
Any other comments? Counselor Marshall.
Go ahead.
I too am in favor of this ordinance as it is written. We can yeah, but, and what if this thing to death, and I think we already have, so I think it's time to put it out there and see if it clicks. I mean, when you rebuild the engine of a car, you know if it's going to work until you put it on the street, so we need to do that with this. Yeah, it's got some issues and some holes, but we'll know that until we actually try it out. Eric, you make some very good points in all your documentation, you're well-informed and well-kept, and you brought some good points, but there's some holes in your arguments too. I talked to you earlier about, I'll send your photographs, I'll just share them real quick with the public. Said the pile of firewood is not, is blight because it's not usable, it's firewood, you can burn it right now. But he said the sink is not, but the sink isn't even hooked up, there's no drain, there's no water supply, so it's not usable. So, you can argue any side, you can manipulate facts and figures to make them say what you want to. Thanks, Mr. Paul, I'm in favor of this ordinance as written, we need to put it out there, and as we go. We can't sit here and say, well, what if, and yeah, but, anyone. And I did speak with those people.
Warranga.
Warranga, and him and I have agreed to possibly get together and combine and just do some labor, help some people out. This is not a, it's a neighbor helping neighbor kind of thing, because not everyone can afford to fix their houses, they don't want to look like that, they just have no other choice. And I told him, I was kind of nervous, because my house would be in disputers.
That was exhibit B.
I prepared it fast in case of what. But, so possibly him and I can get together in the future and.
Fix your house.
And maybe help someone else that doesn't have resources or facilities or the ability to work on a house, and explain to them that him or someone being able to use kind of equipment, but he's not going to help. It's just, you get picked off the hill right away, and that's it.
Thank you. Counselor DeBress.
I also am in favor of this ordinance, and I also plan on voting in favor as well. Just a couple of corrections or comments to some of the things that you stated during public hearing, Mr. Treaster supplied this photo, which is listed as exhibit B, and in fact, the town of Groton was actually going to tear this down six months ago, but they gave the owner of the property some time to get what is considered to be historical artifacts out of the building, and that's the only reason why it still stands to this day.
It's barely standing.
A good push, it's going to go away, I'm not surprised if it's going to go down in a hurricane, but this building is, even though it's, yes, it was listed as an historical landmark, is also slated to be demolished as soon as the town of Groton can do it. The other thing I found, Tom said about, when Eric, Mr. Treaster had referred to the Montal ordinance about the survey of properties required, and I've also, I looked at a lot of blight ordinance trying to help draft this one that we currently have. Some of the towns had that in there, some of the towns did not, but overridingly, it is not required by state statute. Same thing with public view, some towns chose to define what public view is, some towns chose not to define what public view is, also, again, not required by state statute. The other point Eric made was a big thing, a big glaring thing about the legal proceedings that we could take according to section six being totally illegal and completely incorrect because according to an amendment that was effective on October 12th, it allowed the towns to place liens on properties for non-payment of penalties, which is illegal per se. So, that is incorrect, that was an incorrect statement in the RIS documentation on the state website through the Connecticut general statute in Article, Section seven, 148 AA that allows the towns to lien properties for non-payment of penalties. That's all I have to say.
Counselor Allen, I know you took pages of notes.
I took pages of notes, and I'm not going to bore everybody.
I took pages of notes, and I'm not gonna bore everybody with my pages of notes, but I'll, I'll cover a couple items. Two things that, that Counselor Song and Counselor Woddecky said, which lead me to my first comment, is the word reasonable. We're dealing with what is reasonable in town. And right at the beginning of this ordinance is the town of Leger may issue citations. It doesn't say shall. It doesn't say will. It's may. So, it goes back to what is reasonable. The 1998 report that I, that Mr. Treister provided, spoke to New Britain and Hartford, and I understand they have their own sets of problems, so I'm gonna skip over that one. The, the regulations, the idea that it was modeled after Montville's ordinance actually is not true. The Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, I believe it is, CCM, is, has provided a model for all the towns that are part of the CCM to use and administer as they see fit. Section six, the unlawful portion that was the, the comment that section six was unlawful, that actually is what provides the teeth that you don't want to have to use, but I will refer back to my days on wetlands commission. And that's the very thing that we weren't able to do, that when people had blatant violations into the wetlands, filling, et cetera, et cetera, we didn't have any way to enforce it. And, and so that provides the teeth that if somebody doesn't want to, and we've given them plenty of opportunities to, to right a wrong, that's the next, that's the next spot that we go. And then one other clarification, here's Mrs. Warranga identified, section three identifying real property owner and section five, maybe not incorrectly, identifying owner and occupant. That is actually exactly what we want to do. Because the reason is to make both parties aware. The occupant, the owner may be an out-of-state owner, but both need to be identified to make sure that they're aware of the problem because an out-of-state property owner may not be aware of the problem. And I'm gonna leave it at that for now.
Okay. Counselor Wodecki.
I just want to speak to the point that I don't think we've ever passed an ordinance that we haven't gone back, revisited and changed, whether it be a year later or the ordinance on the street, on the road. It's 20 something years old. We're going back and revisiting it. I think to say we shouldn't pass something because it's not right, it's not correct, it's, you know, we won't know until it's actually, we're actually using this ordinance if we made a mistake with the ordinance. I think that some of the pictures that Mr. Treister showed us, they clearly are blight. We're all of us sitting here, but we weren't gonna interact with those questions because I think that's really not what, you know, blight is subjective to a point. And I think we're gonna find that. But I don't think this is a case of neighbors tattling on neighbors. I think it's really gonna be a case of a property that somebody sees that something has to be done about it. And this is gonna be one way to get something done about it. And I might suggest, since there was a lot of little Boy Scouts in the audience today, you might find some help with cleaning up properties with the Boy Scouts. Because I think it's a great idea to do that. The problem is it's organizing something like that. Somebody's gotta organize it. Somebody's gotta get permission from the property owner because, you know, if somebody shows up at my door and says, well, your yard's a mess. We're gonna clean it for you. Like, who decided it's a mess? Maybe I like it that way. I don't. Mine's not like that, but really, I think. I know John's is, right? You really have to, you have to talk to the property owner, and maybe they just don't want anything done, you know? But I think it's a great idea, and it would be nice if it could work out. We have that nice community forum. We can post things on there and get some help, but, you know, think it's a good idea.
Counselor Eichelberg, I was gonna, were you gonna propose any changes?
I was just gonna ask you if you, if you were going to address the attorney's comments or if you wanted me to.
I would, I asked you to, but let's have you go last if you're going to recommend any changes. Does that, does that make sense to everybody?
The last should be first. My first should be last.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Very well. Now, as you feel about it. I'll address a few of the comments. One of the things we hear today, a lot of times in government, is getting involved in people's lives. We hear the phrase that Mr. Warranga used of through no fault of their own. Well, that implies that there's no responsibility, in this case, to property ownership. And I would argue that there is a responsibility to owning property. And if you are unable to afford to maintain your property, then you need to find a way to maintain the property, or you sell the property and you rent. So, the phrase, and you hear it, as I said, in a lot of cases where the government, whether it be a local government, a state government or federal government. Well, these people are in this problem because it's, they're down on their luck, but it's not their fault. Well, there is a responsibility to live in this world, in this case, owning property. To address one of the comments from Mr. Treister and his written, that the opening paragraph doesn't have a purpose. That is a couple of statements. While I would agree from an administrative perspective, you're correct. There is no stated purpose for the ordinance. However, I do not believe that that is a reason to not bring the ordinance forward. I think the, the purpose of the ordinance is implicit in the opening statements and in what is in the ordinance and what they're doing. Some of the other comments related to definition of public view and the list of properties. I think specific to the list of properties, it implies that we are gonna go out and invest a lot of time in singling out individuals. I don't think that's the intent of this ordinance. The intent of the ordinance is to provide a mechanism that is not available elsewhere for severely dilapidated properties that have been not maintained for a long period of time. It is not meant for, in some of the instances that Mr. Treister indicated in the pictures, a property that is undergoing construction. You have a valid permit. Therefore, in the ordinance, it does say not being maintained. I would argue that if you have a building permit and it is under construction, that the property is being maintained, is actually being improved, is in the process. I guess the final thing that, that we bring up is the issue of where we think it's gonna be punitive, we're gonna be taking of property. I think one of the provisions that's in there where that would not be allowed, you can see that if it were the board of appeals that the residents would come to, where some people from outside, we hired people to come in from Rhode Island to man this three-person board. But they're not. They're volunteers from our own town. They are the ones that are going to establish what are the norms of our town, what is acceptable in our town. They're gonna be volunteers. They're also residents. They have, they're neighbors. They are going to establish the acceptable norms for property and then thereby establish what is going to be acceptable and what is blight. They are going to define that as residents of our town and establish that. Thank you very much.
I, I have a few comments before I turn it over to you, Steve. First of all, I, I wouldn't assume, because we didn't respond to the questions on the photos, whether we thought it was blight or not, that we didn't have an opinion, because I had an opinion on every one of them. I think we just didn't want to get into debate.
We didn't want to get too engaged.
Okay, so.
Yes, question two. In, in looking at some of the pictures, we don't know if the tarp on that roof was put up yesterday. So, you let us to believe it was there possibly for six months or a year, but it could have been done yesterday, so that would not be considered blight.
Secondly, to piggyback on what Counselor Wodecki said, it's, it's easy to change an ordinance. This is not the town charter where you have to go through lots of hoops to, to change. And in fact, the building committee ordinance, permanent building committee ordinance, it's been around for about only two years. I'm really thinking at some point of sending it to admin because there's obviously confusion there because of, you know, what happened in terms of the Board of Ed.
Right.
We need to spell it out a little more clearly.
You shall, right.
So. Very funny. Well, people have to read it too to understand it. I don't think people were reading it, but just the point, how easy it is to change. A comment in the patch, the policy established by the council justifying our new combined P and Z commission is to enhance in development. And as a result, development now takes precedence over enforcement. And I was concerned when I read that and then more concerned when somebody repeated it. You know, as our former chairman and land use attorney, Mr. Sullivan always said, it's a town council by statute, has no influence over P and Z. And as far as enforcement, I think I've said this before, you would think that it's October when we created a combined planning, zoning commission, that suddenly there was no enforcement and that these things that have been going, but yet there's been these things, as the mayor pointed out, have been around for 10 years, probably more. If you made a list of the properties that you think have zoning violations, I pretty much guarantee they are not recent occurrences. They're old stuff. And then finally, and I'm, I'm really glad I have a sense of humor on this one. It, it keeps my blood pressure down. My fear is that the council is ready to rubber stamp the ordinance without additional study other than a quick perfunctory public hearing. The first draft was in January, on January 28th, 2010. We started talking about it in June of 2009. I actually pulled this out to see if there's anything that's left from the one we wrote in 2010. Actually, there's, there's a couple pieces of it still there. And that's all I have to say, so.
Chairman, one more thing?
Yes, please.
Getting back to the fair housing resolution that we have in place now, if you think you can qualify for this, please get your applications in. We're having trouble spending this money. And the less we spend, the less we're gonna get this time. So, we need to spend it all. So, if you think you might qualify and you might need some help, contact the mayor's office for the application and the process and get that rolling. There's one more thing that I forgot.
We'll get, we'll come back to you a few, okay. Counsel, Counsel Eichelberg, how do you want to handle, you have some changes. You want to first just describe what you'd like to change?
A couple of comments first?
Yes.
And then I would like to address just a couple of the attorney's comments. First of all, and this is to emphasize Counselor Song's comment earlier, blighted property, whether it's residential or commercial, affects the neighbors. It is not just their property that is affected. If you go and try to get a home loan, they're gonna come out and assess the value of your home. And a blighted property can drastically affect the assessed value of your home. So, if you have a blighted property, you're affecting your neighbors, even, even just in the value of their home, as I'm sure Chairman Davis can attest to in the real estate business. So, this isn't a, this isn't a just leave them alone kind of thing. That's, that's what being neighbors is about. Number two, please keep in mind that the ultimate governing body in this blight ordinance is not the blight officer. It's the blight appeals committee, who are governed by state statute. This is not something that the town of Leger is going to build an empire over. It's certainly not something that we're going to try to use to generate funds. I would point you to section nine of the ordinance, which is the severability ordinance, which clearly states, if a court having competent jurisdiction shall hold any provision of this ordinance invalid, it's invalid. So, again, we are not trying to build a land empire by seizing properties that are blighted. Now, to the attorney's comments, these are not substantive changes. Not one of them is a substantive change. There are a couple of items in here. Number three, I believe everyone can access this on the web, so I'm just gonna call them out by number. Yes, we need to change the verbiage in the definition of dilapidation. That's a grammar issue. The most significant change is item number six, which spells out the use of citation versus notice. This was a change that was made from the previous revision, which should not have been, have been made. So, it was in the previous revision. It got changed. It needs to get changed back. Not a big deal. And so, yes, based on that, I would like to amend my, I would like to amend my motion to say something.
Does, does the, do the councils, are you fine with putting them all in one amendment? Okay, so, so all of your changes?
So then, I would like to make a motion that we adopt the proposed blight of ordinance for the town of Leger as contained in the draft dated February 13th, 2013, as amended by the attorney's comments.
Okay.
Just specify what changes.
Let me back up.
Okay.
There's already a motion on the floor. Okay, so all you're doing is making.
Friendly amendment.
No, that's not do it as a friendly amendment. Let's do it as a, just as an amendment.
Okay.
And then we'll vote on the amendment first. So, just spell out the changes.
I can't be friendly?
Spell out the changes.
Okay.
And take your time. We've waited four years.
What was, what was my comment the last, what was it, six months ago, and you asked me about this, and I said, how, how long do you plan to live? Okay, so, I'd like to amend my motion to read a motion to adopt a proposed.
No, no, no.
Okay.
Specify the changes.
Specify the changes in the document. All right.
Specify the changes in the document. By section of paragraph.
Which one are you gonna do?
I'm gonna address it. Okay, so, change number one will be to modify, this is in section 4B, to modify the term illegal residence to refer to a two-family building used as a three-family building.
Do you want to give a try, Kevin? Would you mind, Steve?
No.
I have taken it and corrected it on the original.
Item one, it just kind of basically, what the town attorney is trying to say there, in my opinion, is that in illegal residence, if you have a two-family home and you're using it as a three-family home.
Right.
Illegal residence. That's not blighted. So, he's just saying, you got, the term of illegal residence in a, in a blight connotation can't be used if it's in that kind. That's, that's what that means. So, I'm not sure if we could change D.
I don't know that you need to change.
I don't think you need to change it. That's just a comment.
Okay, I agree.
I don't want it to comment.
Yeah, let's, let's.
Let me see. Suggest words and or premises be inserted afterward. Dwellings at the beginning of sub-paragraph D of the definition of blighted premises. So, if you go to the definition section.
Yeah, that change should be made.
Yes.
So, now that paragraph will read, it'll read dwellings and or premises that are a serious threat to public health, safety or welfare because of rat or other infestation by vermin, accumulation of trash and garbage, or other debris is defined by in this ordinance. So, the change is just to add that in.
Okay, so that's number one.
That's number one.
That's the first one. So, dwellings, yeah, after the word dwelling, add the word and or premises. So, that'll read dwellings and or premises that are a serious threat to the public health.
Steve, who are.
Dilapidation. The definition of dilapidation should be changed to read a, simply a state of disrepair as by misuse or neglect.
And that would be change number two.
Change number two, correct.
Let's slow down so Roxanne gets that.
So, the definition of the dilapidation.
Delete, two cars are allowed to fall into. Exactly. From the beginning. Strike that from it. Capitalize letter A.
Up to the, yeah, up to the first A, strike everything that's before that. Okay.
Do you have that, Roxanne? Before we move on to number three, do you have that?
Dilapidation is state of disrepair as by misuse or neglect.
Correct.
Okay, number three.
Number three, the change for new owner or new occupant under definitions.
Down at the bottom of page five. Down at the bottom of page five.
We want to change that to read per Public Act 12-146, sub-paragraph three, sub-paragraph B, new owner means any person or entity who has taken title to a property, and new occupant means any person who has taken occupancy of a property within 30 days of the notice of violation and reasonable opportunity to remediate required by Connecticut general statute 7-148, sub-paragraph C, sub-paragraph seven, sub-paragraph H, sub-paragraph XV, and 5B of this ordinance.
Okay, you've got that, Roxanne? That's number three. Is there any others?
Yes.
Say that again?
Sub-paragraph five.
Five C.
Five C.
Yeah, instead of the enforcement.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
So, cut section five, five C of the ordinance.
Five C of the ordinance, we're gonna change that to read per Public Act 12-146, sub-paragraph three, sub-paragraph B, "A new owner and/or new occupant shall upon request be granted a 30-day extension of the time to comply stated in the notice and opportunity to remediate."
Let me know when you're ready, Roxanne. Okay?
Okay. So to address the attorney's last change, number six, where he basically tells us to do a better job of spelling out citation and notice, we're gonna put in the following changes. Under Section 2, it will read per Connecticut? On Section 2 authority?
Section five, no, Section 2.
To back up on you. We're going to put in notices along with citations. So it'll read, "Per Connecticut general statute 7-148, the town of Ledger may issue notices, citations, comma, and then the rest of it." Under Section 4?
Are you ready?
She's ready, yeah.
Sometimes, it's funny, but sometimes paper is easier when you're making corrections. I hate to say that, Steve.
Oh, that's different. That's different. Thank you, Mike, though. I haven't gotten to that yet.
Five A.
Hey, you're coming through next.
Five A, I think it's next.
No. Under definitions, new owner or new occupant?
We already did that.
Already did that. It seems to be with the?
Okay, yeah, we did revise that. Okay, Section 5.
Issue notice or citation and/or citations.
Section 5A.
Is empowered, yes, Section 5A, the blight enforcement officer is empowered to issue notices and citations.
And 5D, I think we need to change to say a notice and/or citation.
I don't think we want to put it in the citation, just in the notice.
Okay, citation in the notice.
The notice shall contain the following information.
Yes, correct. Yeah, you're correct.
Yeah, basically, the order is that a notice is issued. If the notice is not complied with, then a citation is issued. And if the citation is not complied with, a subsequent notice may be issued. So we're just trying to clear up the language a little bit on what a citation and a notice
The general statute specifies what has to be in the citation, not the notice.
Correct.
But the citation goes first, and then the notice goes first. Counselor France?
Compromise for a notice to be sent after the issuance of the citation.
Yeah, that's the second.
But that's the second notice.
That's the second notice.
It is a first notice, then a citation. So if you're taking a citation out, then you need to add a section that specifies more reference to Connecticut general statutes, a notice and a citation, either one. My recommendation would be to reference the statute. That way, if they change the statute, we don't have to change the ordinance. My recommendation, as paragraph E.
There is, there is nothing in, according to the attorney, there is nothing that states what the citation has to have in it, only in the notice. As Public Act, and that's what Mike handed me, Public Act states what has to be in the notice, but not in the citation.
Are you through making your changes?
I am through with my changes.
Mr. Dombrowski, did you make them all?
Yes.
And did, Roxanne, did you get those all? So that was an amendment to the original motion at this time, unless there are any questions?
The motion was made and Mr. Eichelberg was seconded by Mr. Dombrowski.
Unless there are any questions, did you get that, Roxanne? You made the motion and seconded, thank you. Would you call the roll? I'm sorry, one question?
One more comment. It sounds like this is gonna pass tonight, and whoever we appoint or gets appointed to be on this board or be the blight officer should be someone that is compassionate and understanding and well-versed in the science of compromise. Did you just? Actually, my wife taught me all those. Good for her.
Okay, at this time, we're voting on amendment. Would you please call the roll, Roxanne?
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Wadecki?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Combraski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
The amendment carries, at this time, we vote on the motion. Any other questions, comments? Roxanne, yes?
We vote to amend the word motion, and then we vote on the new motion.
She's just asking, she's asking you, she's asking you to call the roll on that.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure we're all pieces of stuff. Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Wadecki?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
The motion carries, moving on to item number?
Two.
Two.
Okay, I'll make a motion to reappoint Public Works Director Steve Mazin as the town's alternate member to the southeastern Connecticut Regional Resources Recovery Authority, SCARA, for a three-year term ending January 31, 2016.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Routine business. Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Wadecki?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen? Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries, item number three.
I'll move that we adopt the fair housing resolution for the town of Ledger. Just very quickly, as Mayor Rodeo spoke about earlier, we are pursuing additional type funding. This Fair Housing Act is one of the things that we have to have in place to do so.
Do we do this every year?
Yes, we do. The towns all over the state are probably doing this as we speak.
Tonight, yeah.
Tonight.
Though they already did theirs.
Councilor Allen?
Again, just looking at the motion, it says April is fair housing?
Month, it should be month, right?
Yeah.
I don't know why we have a fair housing month. It should be fair housing year.
Fair housing forever.
Just not a question. It's federal rules.
Any other questions or comments? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Wadecki?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries, Finance Committee, item number four.
The commotion to set a public hearing date on Wednesday, March 27, 2013, at 6:45 p.m. will be held in the council chamber, 741 Canal Leonard Highway. To review and discuss its proposed 2013 application, the amount of $400,000, the State Department of Economic and Community Development for funds under the Small City Program to continue with the current housing rehabilitation program.
Second.
That's what we've been talking about all night.
Any other questions or discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Wadecki?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Item number five, motion carries, item number five.
The commotion authorizing Gales Ferry Fire Company to overexpend the account fortune 5-002-0104 overtime by up to $2,800 for fiscal year 2012, 2013, due to Hurricane Sandy and Blizzard Nemo.
Second.
Talked with?
Tony Sacone, Chief Sacone.
Chief Sacone, and he feel that due to the two events that we had, he had to overexpend the overtime account. This is the option we have to come back to, is to authorize it with the spender. And I did query him to see whether there was the anticipation of additional, and we did not anticipate having to come back for the year of fiscal year again. So this is sufficient to cover the fee in the fiscal year.
And what's the hope, we gave him $1,000?
Yes.
Because he's already overexpent $1,800.
Correct.
And the hope is also that maybe we might see some of the superstorm Sandy, Nemo money before the end of the year. I doubt that we'll see the Blizzard money, but we might get Sandy.
Any other discussion, questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Wadecki?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries, and I would like to make this motion because I've been waiting to make it for six months. I would move to appoint the permanent municipal building committee as the building committee for the Board of Education's middle school addition and improvement project. In addition, appoint the following two Board of Education members as temporary members to the permanent municipal building committee for the middle school addition slash improvement project. Ms. Mimi Llewellyn, 69, Desert Run Drive, Gales Ferry. And Ms. Rebecca Grabner, 42, Eagle Ridge Drive, Gales Ferry.
Second.
Mrs. Llewellyn is the chairman of the facilities committee, and this is the next step to try to get it to referendum in May.
Good choice of two people.
Yep, you had to appreciate it.
Very good choice.
Just as an aside, that the mayor also can appoint two members to the building committee for the police project. Any other discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Wadecki?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries, we have no time to discuss.
Motion's been denied.
Let's hope we give $6 for work sessions tomorrow. That's right, give six hours of work sessions tomorrow.